All right, we do have a floor in presence, so we can't proceed with our meeting. It is honored for us to be here tonight at East Chester Elementary School for our September school board meeting. And our first item tonight, as we do want to welcome a new member, tonight is his first meeting. Clay Rogers, representing District Two, so Clay, welcome to the school board.
Thank you.
There is, if you don't, Becky position, District One, here we fill out the November elections. So we do have one vacancy on our school board at this time. Also, tonight we need to approve one of our members to join the meeting virtually. Ms. Becky Anderson is joining us online tonight, so we do have to have an order approved that adds to the board. So do I hear a motion that we approve?
I make no protest.
Okay, motion's been made by Ben Couples, second, by Jeff Harris, is there any discussion? All right, if not, all those in favor say aye. Any vote? All right, so it's approved that Becky will be joining us virtually tonight. Our fifth item on the agenda is a recommendation to accept our board agenda.
I make no protest. Accept the board agenda.
All right, motion's been made by Ben Couples, second, by Jeff Harris, to accept that agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Any vote? All right, our agenda is set for tonight. The point saying on our agenda, every year in our September meeting, we do select our board chairman, our vice chairperson, and our legislative representative for this upcoming year. So for that time, as the board board chairman, I will relinquish control of this meeting. It's been compelled us to execute the process of selecting the board chairman for the next school year.
So at this time, we will start with the board chairman, and I will ask the board for nomination.
I nominate Shane Connor as board chair.
Becky also said Shane Connor. I said Shane Connor. Are there any others? If not, then it'd be so moved that Shane becomes the board chairman by acclamation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, they know, be knowing by saying that? Mr. Chairman, I now want to back over to you.
All right, thank you, Becky and gentlemen, for the honor of serving again this year. We do need to select our vice chairperson for the year as well. Open the floor for nominations for vice chairman of Chester County School Board.
I nominate Ben Couples for vice chairman.
Okay, Ben Couples has been nominated. Jeff Harris is second to that. Are there any other nominations? If not, the motion should have made and seconded that we elect Ben Couples. That would do by acclamation, is there any discussion? Not all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, congratulations, Mr. Vice Chairman. Ben Couples now is our vice chairman. We also have a legislative representative. This is a person that represents our board with the legislature of the state of Tennessee on issues. Kind of keeping us informed of what's going on and being informed of how we need to communicate with our legislators. And at this time, the floor is for nominations for our legislative representatives.
Nominate Becky.
All right, Becky Anderson has been nominated to assess that. Motion seconded, is there any other nominations? If not, without motion, then no other votes. We have it on the floor to elect Becky by acclamation, all those in favor say aye. Any vote? All right, congratulations Becky. She'll be serving as our legislative representative. All right, Becky, we move into the business of our meeting tonight. The first item is to approve our consent agenda.
I make my approval for consent.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. There is no discussion on that, all those in favor say aye. Any vote? All right, it is approved. We move into our delegation tonight, and we are, do have a delegation here to present to the board. And for the introduction to that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Kilt.
The one delegate that I had in committee prior to this board meeting is Debbie Hammons from Chester County. Debbie, did you hear? Oh, there you are. Debbie had a question about the opportunity to return to the state health insurance plan instead of what we've been on for the last seven years, the private health plan. And Debbie'd asked that question to approach the board to reconsider and have it go back to another vote. Debbie, you have, you can come on up and address.
The only reason I'm doing this is because we've been with options for quite a while now. I feel like we ought to have the option every year to go back to the state insurance. Reason being, the state is going to be a whole lot more stable there in insurance. We know the benefits there because they have that in there. We don't know about publics. We did need a lot of last year of checking out things any better. So really, what I think that I'm asking you is that we have now areas here to review what the state offered five months' warranty for any decision made to go with five months. They think they'll get job prices lower than within, I'd say, five dollars every month. Maybe lower than the state now, which is good. The government has been pretty much the same as the state and the special requires them to keep it at that level, the state, because if they go, they'll get some money running for insurance. So they're doing the job, not reaching that. And the only thing that I would ask is, we review this stuff, the teachers need to have a basis in it to make sure that that's the one or whatever, and not just leaving that to a couple of curious and they go to town to take. I thank God for letting me talk.
Thank you, Becky. Are there any questions about, is there a different angle for either plan that's over the group, the plan itself?
Well, again, the plan, when she claims half from five points, it's a broker. The insurance is handled through six, just like with Cigna, one of the two options, the state one. What we offer as far as benefits and the plan are exactly the same with Cigna as compared to the state one. They have Blue Cross Blue Shield condition. But again, and she mentioned that we do have to justify equal or superior, at least for one of our options, and which we have to do that each year, and it's an equal consideration. This past year, our private plan was higher than the state one. Hence, we said this year, if the plan repeats that our plan is higher, we are, we go back. But currently, the private plan is a dollar cheaper per month for every plan that's offered to change or create. So private plan is now again returned to the cheaper of the two versions.
So who does the broker, does the broker make it some, somebody in the faculty to?
Yes. Yeah, the district office. Thomas is here, and he can answer some questions, but Thomas is the one mostly involved with this work.
I was just assuming there was a broker involved, and I wasn't clear on which one it was. So it would be, would it be through Blue Cross? Probably Thomas the broker, with the state plan?
I don't, well, the state plan is mostly on the online or by phone. I mean, there's, they're not sending people out like what we've been accustomed to for the last several years to have actual reps come and visit with us that we can talk to.
I did, I did contact just that day, but she was going to come down, like, the city of Rachel, so calm and fair, and so she had a job on national.
That's why I actually, sometimes I have great feelings, if you got brokers willing to make one on one, that's next level of power.
They would make it worse any time I had some of this problem, see, like, they're like, like I said, they're here anyway.
Well, they're people in Nashville also.
Well, I know about a lot more. Don't, it's all involved in the starting, so you probably can put them on great plates of decisions.
Well, the only thing we have to issue, what Thomas can point to, is not benefits channel. There's some extra professional development opportunities that come through. So that's possibly one of their ulterior.
I'm not moving to be a spot or anything like that.
Just the option.
Yeah, having an option, I think we have an option. Some of the people, I don't know if they saw those, but some of the people that are getting close to their families and they're all sort of like, I've got, now I've got to do, but state is more tighter. So I have to talk anybody with the saying, I don't come. Plus, we want, the courses won't be around, the state's going to be the most stable plan to get here. Because they're not going anywhere. The insurance, I mean, like, the process, Mr. Kilt, we're, we're relieved, and trying to take care of us as far as what the cost of them, but there's no consensus, and law and policy is offering the same thing to the state. They're not, there's nothing that says anything to us. And I'm not saying, I'm not going to go back, I'd say, oh, we're going back to the states you were going up. I'm saying that, I'm just saying that we want to be, we want to be a part of the next state, just to talk about that. That's all.
I was just saying, when you negotiate the contract, because they're cat shit on your third plan.
Yeah, I mean, we're not going to change. I'm listening, I'm doing a lot of fun, it's very good that for that, it'll be. And again, thanks to Debbie, you know, for making that presentation tonight. And, you know, we have said, the costs, you know, are going to be back to the same. The private plan will be a dollar cheaper, you know, on the premium, if it ever appear. And I hope that it will be a adequate cost, will be accurate. But I guess some of the things that I want to address, we're not even paying a baby for private plan. The private, you know, if you only get business programs, yeah, which are free county services, and those, you know, you get three business per year, and these would be, I don't know, financial services, well-known to the back of the system, and these are, these are worth, you know, and we do not have to pay any additional to the employee, doesn't have to pay any additional in addition to that. They've got the history, all that money, oh, come on for him, come along, the employee credit. Also, and I think I told you a little bit before, but it's just the incremental customer service that we did at private plan. And I could give you story for story, but even as soon as, as recent as I did that, I hadn't fully called until I had a lunch at the end. I needed to revive my retirement plan before the end of the decade, that's the most I could care of. Back in August thirty, I hadn't quite, I had enough of this, I don't want to comment before my insurance for this empty year. Well, with forty-eight at first, she did not get out of the plane. But with it out, she was like, you're right in your insurance. And in fact, there's about fifteen hundred dollars in the year because that is her choice of what she wants to do. So those are a couple of examples of the service, you know, that we can get with a private plan, just the home model. But obviously, I'm talking about another example, like with GAAP insurance. And if you're not familiar with GAAP, GAAP reimburses eligible housing expenses. I had an employee tear Monday, then we got a six thousand dollar bill, but because I had a GAAP plan, I only made six hundred dollars. I've had a veteran, we say, you know, I'm going to be a GAAP, you know, we would really be in a bad situation. So GAAP is altered through our private carrier, and that saves our employees a lot of money for those who continue to take that place. And then one final amendment, I just talked to share with the board tonight, it's going to be the protection of our own property. Now, if I had scat number said, if one of them's to retire at the end of the academic year, they need twenty-three, and yet Carson's not sixty-five, will get a clear eligibility, they might actually have to fire an insurance plan of their own. Because if we want the private plan on the state plan, you have to be on the state plan one accounting year to be eligible to get the retirement benefit of the state plan. So automatically, if they were under sixty-five, not eligible, you know, or receding, or many of them, they would not even have to fund their insurance, you know, unless they had to stay off, or if they were given a grant, they would retire early at the end of twenty-fourty-two, or after retiring in twenty-twenty-three, be able to continue those benefits. So if you notice, we talked about the cost, we talked about the installables, and again, you have any further suggestions that may add to those, and opportunities for the opportunity that you gave Debbie and I, though, to address the board to know about.
What you were saying, if somebody has problems with their insurance, like, that the state plan can't change that all?
No, I think, I can understand, you know, but I, one of my, my, but I see, you're being on the bottom of the point. I can tell you, you know, they deserve it, they're more concerned with.
And if they retire, are they going to have a real state plan for here before you can be eligible for there?
Right. How?
Again, are these people going to continue to retire, state retired, the same good benefits and everything that we keep you, or who the state plan is on here? I'm just asking.
Yeah, there's, that's obvious, I haven't like, it's weird, you know, we don't get police, we're here to, it's because, and you know, right, they go, where we say, the employee, bottom of the premium, say, a blue shirt, a rock. But it's, it's hard to make a decision. It really, private plan is tired, and these type of differences, twenty-twenty-three, will make things happen. But it was, it's young, I mean, and there's no hard fault of anybody, and then with all these, I think it's our best interest to stay with them, if there's something.
I agree, it's, yes, but if it starts last weekend, we were the first to give them a last food, we didn't get it, that's why I was saying, please let us get on every year since. So we hopefully come up, and they did, you know.
Yeah, and then I would have to protect, you know, you know, last year, we received the agreement at the very end of our, which got him, somehow, to switch the program. And we've been on the floor for five days, so that, that way, you know, private plan is a bunch of private, private. We need to set the plan in a lot soon, so we can get this word out to our board. We got that word out, and the call, you know, there is no hard fault for being, or being a high one.
Thank you, Thomas. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Davis. All right, then, tonight we have our spotlight celebration, first, we are excited to be here at East Chester, which is a repeat reward school, and tonight, we have a presentation from East Chester as well.
I never met you, Daddy. I was asking if the girl was that. It's nice to get.
It's not cute.
Yeah. It's rocky, bro. And Paul looks like more like a mom.
The.
No one made it, she's pregnant, has the guitar, right here. Someone tried a bit, a little bit.
Well, you want to, it's, 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 we want to be helping to.
Hi, everyone. Good morning. I'm so glad that I'm here. This is my class. I have a good situation out there. I would like to hear you for these things that I just wanted to know.
I'm with you on everything that Eric can do. I think what I consider is the words. And the whole slides, I'm going to use some of them that we need every day.
Having to understand that we are good.
I was twelve people in my community and I was about to be married and I was. I was too early to get married. Hold it in the eyes when you're talking.
Having sex seriously again. I'm going to make sure to learn. Again, the first thing you work to do. I'm going to work because we can't work with this game so close. Because I'm not going to let you do this. We need to share our code. I'm not going to.
Having sex, sharing the song about your bed. I think you're talking about that bed. I think it's perfect. I think you're asleep. I said, no, my family friends, I learned in multiple ways, other ways. And I did today. I want this to help with this.
We will now look at each of the blue ones. Blue is very good. Blue is white. Enjoy looking up at the sky, looking for a lift. And I'm going to tell you. Slap me right ass. And it's not enough. This is why I'm saying you can't have a Friday party over the couch. I'm not going to.
But always only have a green one. Except for red. Red looks all bad. You like a red one.
Red is a great color, he says. Red is hard for you. And it's kind of bad. Way to do it.
Sometimes yellow from the blue. Looking away, I suppose. But yellow never said that. She never said something wrong to her.
Green, purple, and orange are nice too. But they never told me it's not bigger.
Every time I said something mean, I was stuck. Bigger, bigger.
Blue, red, yellow, one month of Friday. No one then stopped him. Red pick the orange colors. Do that one of them a little bit.
And she was so afraid of him. She had a different strength with bold strokes. Square her words. She was about to play the other color's laugh.
Red's always in the fairy time. Stop laughing, keep going, yellow. Stop, I can't be going. Stop, I can't go purple and hurt the naked.
Red one, one. Stop wondering about her. But once we go, it's very what you want.
Red was starting to flip colors. So we're going to roll away.
Why do you change the colors?
The stomach, the meat, it's on me. I'm going to stand on it same way.
Then you go and I think.
Green, purple, and red.
Then I can make anything.
And I want to be kind of.
They thought you're not.
Blue's something to check. He wanted to. Red, when you're red hot, he felt that bad.
He's hard, hard to find. Very good. Very specific, really sad, but he's always with me. Very smart, really.
But this time you stood up tall and became serious. He said.
Red love you to try for one. But you don't understand. I just.
Seeing that same tall red for getting his.
Then red could be the red one. And then go on.
Blue color.
Can red be not so goofy?
Let's call it this time.
Seven, red, whole, turn.
Seven.
They started to be very, much to be going inside.
Stop.
Thank you for coming to our show, please. We usually have a show here to show the red card for our snow. Seven holes. This is for the first. We just need to clear our good for everyone. This is one of our working habits. Taking care of our bodies. This is the best we ever had.
Okay, if you want to hear a snippet, you want to be down for a little bit. Continue if you're happy.
I am in M V S. Just a minute, guys, just discuss. Well, smoke. Same as June, I believe.
Yeah, okay, guys.
Is he over? Not like that they can't. It's a. He never happened here, hey. So. I went to low cost for trees.
Yeah, it's good. I'm going to.
Yes.
Oh, man. Yeah, thank you to the team. Go to the right, guys. You better do it.
You've done a fantastic job as orange.
Oh.
Mom gets pretty loud for you about five a.m.
Hey, so late.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Kill. Thank you. All right, this is continuing our first item of business. Uh, for our meeting tonight. And this is a recommendation on a recent bid open for. A proposal for the rental honored plant property. And a good opening for purchase after the school system trial.
We had a bid opening this past September fourteenth, Wednesday, fourteenth. Uh, we had two bids. Uh, included the bid documents. As far as the strength that Coach James and myself were present for. Of the two bid openings, you see that team, uh, excuse me, Steve Pike. Uh, offer a price of five thousand dollars for that property. The, uh, again, I'll say this, the property is located on the, the, the second page of your package. Shows the, uh, the D D block. Almost one point eight acres. Uh, it has a block house on it. Uh. And we knew that if we were and when we build on that property later, that, that, that house would be having to be removed. Because we could not have any value in it. Steve Pike, five thousand dollar price tag for his bid. And Clay Morris, Morris was the second bid that, uh, submitted that, that day. And his bid imposed ten thousand and sixty. I talked to both bidders. Steve Pike was planning to use the property for his business, which is, as you know, Bill Mitchell's body stuff. He was going to use it for a sand blast locations. Clay Morris told me that he was just looking at that real estate's value act. So, uh, he didn't get into any elaboration of what he plans to do with property. But he was just looking at it and saw it available in the paper and wanted to see it.
And there is a fiscal number. We do have the authority to accept the bid or to reject both bids and maintain the proper.
I, I could say reject it.
Reject both bids. The motion is made by Clay Rogers, seconded by Jeff Harris to reject both bids. Is there any discussion about that? All those in favor say aye. Any vote? Some of them, we will reject both of the bids. All right, recommendation now is for government policy changes. Beginning with a T S D change in our credit recovery policy in the school system. This past summer. The, uh, state board rules were developed for a new grading scale for all Langston students. We at Chester County District have included all grade levels. And it's on a ten point grading scale where ninety to one hundred is an A. Eighty to an eighty nine is a B. So far and so on. The application for this bid, or excuse me, this, uh, policy is for credit recovery. Credit recovery has been established by the state. Is that the best grade that a student can earn? If they receive the credit, new credit recovery is a D. The D acquired this summer was a seven percent score. That's the best they could get before. Now, because of the adjustment to the state board's main grading scale. Now it's a sixty. So the only change is going to be related not included for T S D as the draft. And the current Chester County Board of Ed policy is four point two one oh. The change concludes the grading a sixty now as the best grade can be earned, which is the new standard. So. That's that first. You want to go ahead and make the division? Okay. Uh, so we're about to, uh, discuss the four point two one oh, which is credit recovery change. Is there a motion? We accept that change, we accept it.
I make a motion to accept it.
There are seconds. Our motion was made, accepted, and any other exceptions? All those in favor say aye. Any vote? All right, this, uh, recommendation is accepted. The next thing is a recommendation from a stakeholder to change our standard dress code policies. And, uh, you know, how, uh, Mr. Kill's elaborating.
Well, I was approached a few, several weeks ago, since our last board meeting. Asking for considerations for adding cargo pants shorts. That would be those pants that have the larger pockets on the side. And then the cargo pants and shorts, which would have extra loops. And some additional, uh, pockets lower in the leg. If both of those could be returned or have as an option to wear for accessible fancy shorts. Uh, and going back to, to the years past, when we had this policy first implemented. The, the concern at that time was concealing those restricted items. Cell phones at that time were restricted. Uh, for weapons, drugs, any other parent failure that wouldn't need to be at school. That was the initial reason for that. Uh. But again, since we have had some more possibility, more freedom since our COVID years. I, I sent some free to the board event.
We have a name and place. You guys have to come in for that. Something that affect anybody making?
Still requiring two colors.
Well, I said it's hard to properly.
That's it.
Right. Not, not where they said.
Yeah.
Is there a recommendation for change, uh, to accept this change in the policy for six point three one? I make motions.
Sex.
Jeff makes a motion, then it's accepted. Do you have a discussion on that? That's right. All right, all those in favor say aye. Uh, any votes? All right, that change in the policy is approved. Uh, next, we have a couple recommendations as the board people sends down some resolutions to our state. Uh, legislative, uh, some models, like their discussions. Specifically on our third grade retention. And also to reach out some educator duty requirements, just showing our support. Uh, what we feel about these particular items. So you want to go to the, what are you talking about?
Well, and I'm, I'm just briefly, if you had a chance to read the resolutions. The first one, again, this is a change in state law, the beginning of play with the first extraordinary sessions they had. Coming out of COVID, that first COVID shutdown. And during that time, the learning goals at third grade level was going to be addressed. And the address, particularly like with most officials, as far as state law now. Is that if a student does not score proficient or advanced, which now the terminology of eating expectations or feeding expectations. On the E L A, that's the English language arts, in the force assessment. Then those students will have to be considered for retention in the third grade. If they don't satisfy some of these, uh, extensions that are allowed. And those extensions are included in that first page, under letters A to D. One thing in Chester County has invested a lot of our effort into recently is making sure we provide tutoring for these students. Because we. If we were to retain that many children, and this is true across the state, I have multiple districts, all across the state. And our levels are better than most as far as their proficiency with English language arts. But still, our proficiency to have that sheer number of students being retained into the third grade. Or the less into the fourth grade. It is. Or the less you into the fourth grade, it is, that's significant. We would have to hire teachers. You would have to have more space because you would solve the basic spaces you have. Because other than just a few students facing all the local decisions. Most students show the competency that they need to, to progress on. But now in the state law, it is requiring those two lower tiers. And that's approaching expectations is a wide range of student abilities, a very wide. We're not talking about a very small population. In some instances across the state, it's up to fifty percent of their student population falling to those two lower categories. For more, and to say that many people are being retained in the third grade. Retaining that many students is detrimental, not beneficial, in my mind, to you and many others. And that's, that's the first regulation based on is leaving the decision of making retention rules fly high at the locals. Because we're not going to look at just one test to satisfy whether a student has the capability of being competent. And successful through their whole school career. I know the third grade year is very critical. And they're, and the claim is, and there are studies to support. That if they're not reaching grade level without third grade, then that child comes risk of being a significant high risk of dropping off. We don't know any student dropping off. Can we provide additional resources that is needed? But again, the one test is not the destination to determine whether that student is capable of success. Because some students, or test takes, they read well, but can't test well. But we're juxtaposing everything on retention based on one test, that one test in its frame. So again, it is my request, the board reading this first resolution. Would support that retention rules or decisions need to be made at the local level.
We'll take these more by orders. There are recommendations to approve the first resolution to show our support maintaining that duty locally. Motion is made and seconded. Any other discussion about that? All right, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, we will send that resolution forward. And then there's a second resolution about, uh, duty.
Well, again, we've had a great experience with Mike's getting, uh, a bunch of students excited about, excited about performing before their fans. And their family fans, uh, neighbor fans and all the others in Cleveland. And you see the joy that they have in learning and demonstrating what they have now. For us, that is the paramount job of our educators, is educating our students based on what grade they teach, what substance they teach. Not all the additional things that now have added to the, uh, in their duties. Uh, and in some cases, those duties, those additional duties are significant. And indeed, they're our, to teach students well. Because it's drawing time away from the true instructional time. And having to admit, duties be responsible with the state's name, or state's name, uh, responsibility. So again, in this shorter resolution, and this is in a resolution shared by some other districts in the state. Is that we request that the, the state government look at those duties that they assign. And additionally, what our teachers are hired to do, that's paid students in the content, in their talk, teaching. With all those extra duties, we're asking them to look at what they're doing, reflect on it, and revise and shorten. So that there's more time available for our teachers to teach.
There are recommendations to approve the second resolution to revise the duty of our educators. Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. These will be sent forward to, just so you know, to Governor Lee's office and our state representative, Kurt Hayton and Senator Paige Waller, to show our support for both of those. Uh, that is consideration for the, uh, Northchester Benson High School, uh, to follow up on the recognition for the National Register of Historic Places.
Again, I see the letter from Dr. Saunders, who's here with us tonight, and several of the members. I've seen a few of, uh, James, oh, you got over here. There you are, James. Former schoolmate, two years, right, James? Not too, not too old to count though. But the, the request, again, what they approached us with last month, to be considered for the, uh, for Northchester Benson High School. To be considered, uh, recognized for the National Register as historic places. Dr. Saunders, I did communicate to the person at the state that she had recommended. And confirm, uh, some information on their website with her. And then provided the board members a copy of the brochure that outlines what is included with that and what is not required. What it wanted to say, the National Register does not on what it does. So the board's going to expose to that, that information.
Uh, I want to go back to our previous continued visits, obviously, just to follow up. Uh, we had tabled this until the Maroon County Commission as well. Has that been done at this time, Mr. Saunders? Sure, absolutely. Come on, come on up here. Uh, just, I was asking, since our funding body is the county commission, we had tabled it until that was presented to them. And then we can follow up with that. Is, is that arrangement related to, to present to the county commission at this time?
No, um, I was going to wait. Uh, my information from the, one of the commissioners is that, uh, we need the school board to, to know what they're going to do. Before they can make any decisions. And so they're really waiting for your support and assistance in this process. That was communicated, communicated to me, right? And so, you know, that's why I am, that's why we're here. And that's what we're going to do first.
Sure.
Um, because the county commissioner said, okay, now you need to go to the school board first. And see what their plans are for that particular building. And, uh, see if you can get their support and assistance in this process.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, absolutely. Are we, this is my first time hearing about it. Um, are we talking the whole campus? Are we talking the original? Uh, not the wings that were added on, but the original small version of the school?
The building as it is now.
The building as it is today, not when it was first built.
I, I'd never asked her that question, Clay, so I would not.
And, and Ms. Saunders, you also mentioned that if it wasn't feasible to do the whole building, maybe a cafeteria or maybe the gym. So it may not be the whole building. But.
Right, again, you know, that.
Building will get the recognition, but you may not redo but one portion of it.
Right, that's right. As for, and that would be, I'm not a decision. But right now, we're just going to enter into the process. So we really need your support and assistance in this process. Because in this process, we actually have to go into the building, we'll take a look at each room, make a picture of each room. And then present all of this to, uh, to the state commission, historical commission. And so that's why we need your support and assistance there. And I think it was communicated that there are no restrictions. It's typically an honorary.
Correct, correct, that's right, correct. I had not asked the questions of the lady I spoke with, who, uh.
Obviously from her.
Okay.
And so I was going to question that about you.
Got you. So you would need to gain access to every room to assess to whether or not it would fall up?
No, no, we just, they just need to see that, they need to see the building as it is. Uh, in fact, I believe that all the information, as we look at it historically. Part of the building as it was originally versus what it is now. And so historical intelligence.
Well, it's, you know, again, there's, you know, the area in the building right now that was, that are, you know, during the day for construction.
And so my understanding, right, we just only need about two classrooms or three.
It's about three classrooms and then there's office space down in the hallway. And now a very, uh, story of, you know, hardware equipment, the technology department housed in Northchester. So they have any type of used devices like screens that are there for short. Uh, new devices too, or, or first stored there and then transported to the campuses if it's needed.
And so wait, let's make, that really doesn't matter. They just need to see how it does look now. As far as our report that we need to get there. And it's the condition, it really doesn't matter right now. They just need to see what it looks like. And here again, you need to take pictures of each classroom and submit that to, in fact, we need the floor plan. And then based on the floor plan, take a picture of, of the floor, of the classroom, that floor plan there, and present that to them.
And just to remind, since this is going to Clay's first meeting, to, um, say this moves forward. What would be the ultimate goal? Or what's your, what, where would you like to see this progress once it's changed? What will be done with that building once it's changed?
Our first goal is to get it on the National Register for historic places. That's our first goal. And that is a long detailed process. And so once we do that, we're hoping for, to submit some preservation grants, to receive some of those. Here again, it goes back to what could be restored. And maybe, or we could restore the gym and then maybe later restore the cafeteria and kitchen. And so again, it just depends on the grants that we're able to receive. But in receiving those grants, the priority is that we need to be on that National Register for historic places. That's what I want to hear us.
Uh, did you say when those, those grants would not require local funding or, or matching funding of any percentage?
Again, from grant.
Right. Well, that was my reason for asking about the county commission, because they are our funding bodies. So we can't really speak on behalf of the people who fund our student system. So I want to see what they say.
I understand, but they, they want you to support you for us.
Yes, of course.
And to be honest with you, we could all be jumping up and down for it. But when it comes to spending money, they're the ones that's going to make the decision.
But it will be with some points, so. We're all, I mean, I'm a very educated person, yes, sir.
We're not asking for any money. I'm not asking for any money.
Uh, Mr. Vincent, would you mind explaining to me?
No, okay, James. We just want definite consideration. We are in the process of getting this whole process started. It does have to be any money, any challenge from the bottom. In order to be able to do this, we have to show the building, ask if it is what's going on. And the process is open, open to the guy. Dr. Saunders, it's coming to you, it's asking for more support as we keep that process started. Everything else is down the line, everything is down the line. And we know that that's going to break down. But we are, we are, this was not just the process, the creation of the mission, the duty of the school. They can get all the information we need, you know, submit that.
So if, if they did approve it and you, we applied for grants, we, whoever applied for the grants. And they give you money to restore it, then it would be there for the school system to still use as a school or?
The person I talked to at this National Register, the Tennessee Historical Commission, said it matched the grant. Said it would be, the, the number that what she gave me was forty percent match. So it was, I mean, and I understand from your meeting last month, Dr. Saunders. To be disqualified, I mean, it's got to be on the National Register, that's it. So the process of what she and, and Mr. James Hank said, to get all the rest is the first way. But then it was the second, they're wanting to, and they used the example, if you wanted to renovate like the windows. That's what they say, or what person I said, said it would be, you know, still a matching grant. And it would qualify for a certain dollar amount, but then what, the forty percent falls back on the owner.
And also to remove that, or that house.
Well, I was, I'm making my question to you.
And I think that gave me a comfort of the only one high school in Langston. Where they actually received a grant, say, you know, they're government grants in addition to state grants.
Well, you know some of the drivers too, I know.
But I think I can see that really spreading there and deteriorating because it's, it has a base foundation. It just needs to go there and be renovated and be used for some type of purposes. And that's what a lot of the old African American high schools have been doing in various countries. One is Lexington, the Ondola High School. And there are several others that have gone through this process, have gone through this process. And they have renovated, not, maybe not the whole building, the portions of the building, the cafeteria, the gymnasium. And see, those two could be used for the community.
Oh, yeah.
And then they, in the past, what's it been?
My grant, written form of shelters using gymnasiums.
And even a cafeteria and kitchen, you know, that can even affect and could be used by the community. As a meeting place, as a purpose.
Okay, your method of that is to seek out the other grants that might be available. Again, just to just tell you, we're very scared to what the building stands for. We just are trying to be good stewards to making sure we're looking at the county that we're entrusted with. So it's nothing about what the building stands for, it's more about making sure we're in the place of authority to look at what might come after it's added to the register. Does that make sense?
Uh huh. Now, also, when you, if you.
Mister, I, I wish I was a doctor like you, Doctor. So I was going to say, four sticks, one cannon.
Okay, if you look back at the email that I sent you, I received a huge historical question. On that email, I particularly asked a question. If that building could be used by the single, by the, about any restrictions. And so the answer is there are no restrictions.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
There are no restrictions. And I can't emphasize that enough.
Yeah, and, and.
You're not obligated.
Yeah, Dr. Saunders, I have communicated that, I mean, even after another person being questioned, yes, 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 ma'am. But again, we're just making sure that, and again, like I understand, the community views that could lead to renovations. Seeking grant, I know someone I talked to on this side is the one that told me that the imagine grant, so then.
Things you talked to, they say that they're here to accept some of our, that holds that building near, near, near to a town. Because it has a lot of historical value to us, uh, especially in years, your process, you know, knowing that we're going to walk on those streets. And that, that school, that all grownups in them, I tell you what, that's a true desire. And, uh, not only what you do, but you're all going on that, and I come through that school. And everybody around here, this people down, they've all gone through this. Now, granted, it has, uh, deteriorating over the years. Some of us going to get rid of it. Should have pushed it a bit harder to keep building up to school. But now, and this is a procedure, in order to indicate in a statement, the actual community has said. I mean, that building has been used for so many different reasons, we just think out the dots, just a little, just a little bit. But this is the third.
This is where I found myself, so I guess so far so good. And I was told that, yeah, recognition, I mean, this one is a school board. And we, this is a school board's plans for that building is before you can make us. And so I did connect that with board of the county commission.
Right.
Okay, again, this is the first step. This is, this process is continued too.
Yes, ma'am.
It's a large process. That's.
So I would have to speed quick the process as we move forward with that. But with Kill's and her and his supporters, uh, to their knowledge, it's been so gracious to allow us. To operate out of that facility, uh, in various facilities, uh, with our, our community. And so we want to, uh, be a part of all of this, but again, thank you, uh, for the dedication. We have a first ball basketball game the last Sunday, and they were so welcoming, having last, uh, but it won't be long. Uh, they have that, that is a big achievement sometimes, with, with Kill's, hey, listen, we need those. Back down with that, that is a good people here, so that doesn't really have access to the GM. And we are not to do that. Uh, so we want to part of all the conversation, we have an hour and a half. Uh, that we are going to be pushing to get resources, uh, fully and correctly. fully have corrections.
I'm, I'm, I'm forward to going and getting all the names. I'm assuming.
Just supporting the process.
That's what I would have to do.
You have a motion to approve before supporting the process of achieving the.
I'm making that note.
All right. Motion's made and seconded. Is there any, any questions? Any questions?
Thank you.
All those opposed? Any opposed? All right. Do you have that?
Thank you.
All right. The next one of our, our approving the districts by one reason, between us doing this school year. So, uh, we have the list of our package, forty, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-three.
Again, uh, board members, from late springery until the start of this school year around, late autumn, we allow, uh, coaches, sponsors, administrators to be at any fundraising requests. What you have, election fundraising requests has been submitted and approved to their building principal first, to the director of school second. It is my request that the board override the fundraising so that then we'll close them up on our website and the local page.
So motion approved.
I'm making motion approved fundraising.
Motion's made and seconded. Any other? All those are good. Any opposed? All right. They are approved. Uh, importantly, the, uh, final business item tonight is approval of the ESER two-point-oh, three-point-oh, uh, budget plans. If you have a copy of your pack.
Yeah. And what I, you, board members, is just a one-page overview of the budget. So you see what the dollar amount, this is carryover funds from the initial entry that we received, the ESER two, again, the number itself tells you that's the second iteration of the federal funds that we received. The first one was called hairzack. Uh, the second was ESER two and then ESER three is the third one, gaining more recently. We have reapply for what monies are not spent or in comfort during the first year or the earlier year. We reapply with existing signs, but what you have in budget overview is a one, a one-page for each twelve of, and, uh, ESER three is actually on the back. So you see the total dollar amount for each, uh, degree built by location. You see where it says all for each. We have, they have a million for ESER two and three million for ESER three, still available. But again, these are, at these, are screening off whatever, there are items that are allowed. And again, a, a significant percentage has to be to address learning loss. Of course, that can come in many different ways. Uh, but see the breakdown and in fact, in your, uh, the budget amendments that were considered earlier that you approved during the consent agenda, that include a more detailed description of the spending, uh, of where those dollars go in ESER two and ESER three. But the, has to consider, it has to be reflected in the board minutes that this information has been shared. Shane, he's on one of our committees, our community committees, to address the spending of ESER funds. Uh, and that has to be revisited every so many years, uh, to meet the federal guidelines.
We have a motion to approve these budget plans.
I'm making that.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
A second.
All right. Motion's made and seconded. All those, or any discussion first of all? Okay, all those, you guys say aye? Any opposed? All right. They are approved. Uh, last thing we have tonight is the updates all over the floor. Mr. Kildare, any events you want to share or board members that have any questions that you both have and, um, the updates in your pack.
I will share the, uh, you know, like fifteen months ago, uh, I was willing to make a consistent district vision as where our true listing is going and our efforts to improve not the education opportunity that you have today in classes. But I will go student to complete their coursework in Chester County, gaining those credentials, those certification that are beyond just the high schools of Florida, to get them to job leadership and really career value. And we were fortunate this past season to have a day in the district where the state board of education represented for our district, and this represents several thousand students. His name is Larry Jensen. He lives out of Shelby County. And he and some of the state board of education staff came and observed, uh, for one, they observed the, um, the, the programs study that the government has, specifically the coordinated, or excuse me, the, uh, hillside class with Jessica. Uh, she's got an EMS class that has an ambulance in the classroom and it's structured to scale. So the students can learn how to work in that environment. But they also, uh, Mr. Jensen and the state board staff have visited our vocational building to view not only what James Carter's doing in his coursework in automotive, but go see the Tennessee policy of wide technology, Trump set up that offers welding our students both during the school day and after school hours. Uh, heard feedback from the state department was very pleased with, uh, the work that we're doing in those two areas. They also went to some teachers in our district that day. And we also, probably fifty-five students who came, uh, to the cafeteria and just kind of shared some of their part, things they wish to be different or better. And, uh, they're getting really good, uh, complimentary of visits. And I really look forward to the opportunity to have him, uh, being a person who might reach back out for us and ask our opinion when decisions are made, because we say law systems that affect education, the state board of education, including Larry's role, will be the one who drives the schools to implement that. So it's a very influential position to reserve and he's very, uh, not interested in making sure that the effort that we're doing is really on the wheel of what he wants to see. All of those, especially what things we do as we prepare for the impact that new local cities will have in our witnessing the area for many, many years to come.
Any other things anyone has questions about? All right. If there are any, uh, any other business, any board members you bring before the board? If not, I'll remind you, we will have a calibration service with your normal community, Mr. Mark Griffin, our two outgoing board members on Monday at the Chester County High School Cafeteria. And then we'll, uh, have our next school board meeting at Jackson School, that will be at the school that will be from October the twentieth. And we look forward to that.
Is there any, is there any update on the bus situation as far as the, the testing?
Uh, Brett on this one. I warned today that there are eleven drivers ready.
So. We're just going to have a fun, uh, be, be, this is, I don't care, three months.
Is it, is it T-Cat or just being?
We're a T-Cat, it's good to the gang. And even with that, there's, they're trying to be alert to get there.
They've got many people that are reading tests.
The state doesn't offer third-party testing.
They're trying to.
Everybody's trying.
They're off. The state, you know, I choose numbers together because we can, so we can speed up your classes and everything that is, in terms of mine, I have four years of.
Well, and I have conversations with Harden, who is director. See, they've been with Durham a third party for years and they are down about three routes, similar routes, two to three black routes. Everybody's got as short as the driver.
But it doesn't have to go through the DMV. You can get a third-party tester.
So a few more of them.
I did.
State, I would assume they would have to be, uh.
You have to be.
The, the third-party person would have to be affiliated with the state.
You'd have to have some, yes.
Because homeland security. Yeah. When, when they started all the, uh, homeland security and, and all that.
That's what knocks a lot of the third-party testers. That's why, that's why the state feels honored. Because when they, when they implemented the homeland security, that's what a lot of them that keep up with all the.
Any other updates? All right. There's more meetings Thursday, October twentieth at the end of our agenda. So this meeting is adjourned. Thank you for attending. Thank you each.